Board of Trustees meeting. It is December 16, 2020. And this meeting is being held virtually and is being recorded. I will call the meeting to order. And we will start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag, which is back here. I pledge allegiance to the flag. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Senator Byron M. Baer Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Act. Notification has been given to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, rather, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are also available at the reference desk. I will call the roll. Agnes Kulabania absent. Iris Gislin here. Tiana Gresham absent.
No, that was Ed.
Nicholas Scampala, that's me, I'm here. Ed Ward, hello.
Hello, everyone. Just got home.
Kevin McNeil here.
I'm here today.
NBC is here. And Mayor Kramer, I don't see him yet.
He's coming in the door.
He's coming in the door.
He's skiing, he's skiing, he's coming on ski.
Okay. For the public part of the meeting, Mr. Wardlaw, are there any members of the public signed in?
Not at this time.
Okay, so.
Agnes is here.
The public, Agnes, hello.
Hello.
Okay, so Agnes is here. The first public portion of the meeting will not be held, seeing as there are no members of the public here. Discussion and approval of the prior meetings minutes, which were from November 18. I do have a little wording problem with it. It says there being no members of the public signed in, the meeting was closed to the public. Well, it's not exactly.
Not closed, yeah.
It should say the meeting, the public meeting, the public comment portion of the meeting was.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. And that'll refer again.
Nobody was in.
But otherwise, are there any other comments?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes with the slight wording?
Okay.
NBC?
Yeah.
Iris, second. Okay. Any discussion, any further discussion? Should have waited for the. Okay. Those in favor, motion. Those opposed, motion has carried. We will go on to the directors' reports. You want to do financials first or operations first?
Yeah, let's do financials first.
Everybody has gotten them? Does anybody, does anybody have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Since there are no questions, let's go on to the.
Financial.
Operations report.
Okay.
That was the financial.
Yeah.
We're done with the narrative part, right? We're done with the financial?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're done with the financial?
We are done with the financial. I don't see any.
Number one.
Nothing to question.
Oh. Is there a question?
No.
Okay.
Yes, January, we are done with the financial reports. Thank you. And perhaps you want to do the operations report now?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Um, I just want to highlight that because the Recreation and Parks Department is close to the public, they asked the library if we would host their Giving Tree, which we were happy to agree to. And I don't know if you've been by the library at night, but it really looks nice. It's, you can see it lit up, and we're very happy to have it there. So far, I shouldn't say so far, but in November, we had 18 adult programs. We had programs on the kids block and three in person. The children's room was going out to the gazebo and doing storytime. And they're doing these story trail programs, but that's kind of on hold for now because it got a little bit too cold to do it. So they'll do it on warmer days or they'll pick it up again in the spring, if we're still semi-closed.
Hi.
Hello, Tiana.
Hi.
Hello, Tiana. Hello, Tiana.
Hello.
And the winter reading program is going to start on the 21st. And it's called Warm Up with a Good Book. And always looking ahead, the summer program is going to be called Tales and Tales, which I'm assuming is going to be with an animal theme.
Yes. Squirrels and snakes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you. President's report, that's from me. You've all gotten that in your packet. Have you read it? And are there any comments on the president's report? I would like to comment a bit on it, but January deserves much credit for getting through the application for our grant, which came. And I think we should all clap for.
Yes, yay.
Thank you.
That was a pleasant surprise for me. I wasn't at the last meet, so, yeah, that was a pleasant surprise.
I'm so glad it worked out.
Yeah, good work.
Here's where experience and long experience really paid off and perseverance. Thank you, January.
That's right. And it was, it was a great learning experience to hear about it first and then to see it, you know, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Perspective, you know, just, just, just from us talking about it and wondering if, if we were going to put in for it all the way to, you know, to fruition and to see it done. It was, it was, it was wonderful. And yes, January, thank you.
Actually, thank you. It goes back to 2017. That's when the voters approved it. So it's been a long time, a long.
Wow, so I wasn't at the beginning, but.
You might recall there were other pieces of land that we were looking at.
Yeah.
Route 27, one on South. And Route 27 fell through, South Middle Bush Road.
Remember that.
In fact, kind of like, we got talked out of that by people in the township.
Yeah.
Recall that there were great, there was great opposition to a park in that area. And the people there were, would probably be bitter enough to pull things up for a long time. So now we have a piece of land subdivision.
What's supposed to happen always does.
Yeah. Subdivision is going through, and we will buy it from the Board of Education. It's already been announced that we're going to, we're looking to build a library there. So we will continue with that. One thing I'd like to add, at our January meeting, I believe, as we've done in the past, we'll be electing officers. So the officers of this organization are president, a vice president, and a secretary, treasurer. So think about those.
No, 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 no. President, vice president, treasurer, secretary. Vice president is also the treasurer.
Okay, I got that wrong. Think about those offices that are coming up. Correspondence and communications, have we, the president's report talked about one communication that the mayor got, but, and also it talked about a communication that we got from PIAH, the state organization. So that's kind of been covered. Is there any other communication or correspondence?
We got a very nice, I didn't bring it, a thank you note and a very generous donation of $2,500 from a patron who's also one of our volunteers.
Nice.
Very good.
Yeah.
$2,500, wow. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a big one.
Yes. That's.
Is there a plaque associated with that? I mean, do we make some kind of a recognition of?
Good.
Well, they get a very nice thank you from me, a thank you letter.
I think it would be in line, in addition to the thank you letter from January, our director, that our secretary send another one from our trustees.
Well, I'll be happy to do that. But I was thinking, since we have that wall with the tiles and all, maybe, maybe it's, it's, and I'm just thinking right off the top of my head, we have several of the communities that are 55 over. Maybe we should volunteer among us to go to one of their meetings if we ever have a, if ever a clubhouse is opened and we could go. And so to, to think of donating or, or leaving upon their demise a donation to the library and then start some kind of a wall or something of having a plaque. It doesn't have to be an elaborate thing, but a lot of organizations do that. And I think that it might be worthwhile. If you get one or two, you're, you're ahead of the game.
Yeah. This sounds to me like the type of function that some libraries carry out through a Friends of the Library organization. As of now, we don't have such an organization.
The staff can do it. I mean, the staff could do it easily.
Yeah.
The staff has done fundraising before.
Oh, okay.
So when things open up again, I could send the outreach library. Go pitch it.
Well, when I first came on board, which is a long time ago, I, I very much wanted to get started with the Friends of the Library because I used to go to the Burnettsville Library for a lot of their programs. And they had a very active Friends of the Library. And.